All right, we are live streaming and recording, so.
I have somebody asking how do they get on to the meeting? So how would like a town's person?
If they want to get into a meeting, they need to go. The easiest way for them to go is just go to the Town of Norton website, go to the calendar, and the meeting will be published there with all of the information. Just click on today's date, and it's probably the only meeting going on. Actually, there might be others, but it's a school committee meeting. And right up top, it'll have the link information for them to get in.
I think selectmen were on tonight, too, but they moved theirs to a 5:30 start.
Jen, I don't see it on Facebook.
It says live in the corner. All right, I'll stop it and start it again. If it's okay, we'll just wait a few more minutes to kind of work through these glitches. Karen, I don't know, I clicked on closed caption on mine, and I'm seeing it.
Yes, you would, but there's also what Kathy provides with the link is if somebody didn't want to watch the actual Zoom, but wanted to see it on a full screen, they would click on the link.
I understand.
Our faces, they would just see the text. It's somewhat easier to follow it, I think. We're all set.
We're good?
Yep.
Perfect, so it is 6:31. I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting for Thursday, August 6th. I will turn it right over to you, Dr. Byetta, to kind of continue our discussion. We've had two nights already of discussions, question and answers, and we'll sort of turn it over to you to get it started for us.
Madam Chair, thank you, members of the committee and my colleagues and the general public. So here we are, we've reached a night where the committee has undertaken several weeks of information, including impact bargaining collective sessions and executive session in preparation for this vote and the next step of impact bargaining with the Norton Teachers Association. I think it's important for us to just historically take a look at a few things. A crisis situation in March of 2020, very clear, if you will, communication from my office over and over again to not only the committee, but also from the committee to my office about making sure that anything moving forward was better than when we did during the crisis. We attempted some good things and we fell flat in some others, but it wasn't from a lack of trying, it was just more of being in a crisis vote. We heard the committee loud and clear, we heard parents loud and clear, and our own NTA members and staff that work for us and our administrative team. The summer work has been probably one of the more difficult summer works for administrators in a long time, but over 40 volunteers, teachers, administrators, parents, students have been involved in this process. Our path to getting to this vote is very different from a lot of communities, and I think we can see that in some of the things that we're hearing that are happening around us, that we've tried to be transparent, open, communicative, allow for folks to have difference of opinions, not only within this group, but within the summations and the issues that we've heard at meetings or during the Q and A. And I think also our ability to recognize that both the Norton Teachers Association, this committee and the administration have some values about wanting to make sure that decisions going forward are around the safety of students and the staff, and making sure that we try to find a way to have some type of new normalcy for our students and for our community of educators. I also think it's really important for us to have and take some time to think about that this process and how open we've tried to be and if people feel differently, I'd love to hear how we could have made it better after it's all done. We're always trying to make ourselves better. Is that we've tried to undertake providing to the school committee as much information as we could, grounded around directness, around areas that we won't know some answers until we actually have a vote, until we actually communicated to parents, which would be as soon as tomorrow, as soon as we communicate to staff about what the plan is and how it impacts them, either through childcare, their own medical condition, a family member's medical condition, and all the rules and regulations that apply to that. And I think that the pros and the cons that you see in the return to school fully, the hybrid or the full remote, can be debated in general. I mean, I think all of us in the last, I would say, two to three weeks in particular, as the superintendent or US School Committee, have received for every email an example of why. And by the way, I think we should be thankful to the, for lack of a better word, educated population of Norton that has come forward with very clear, definitive, using data, using published articles for X and then against X and for Y. It truly speaks, I think, to the kind of community that Norton has. And the decision tonight is one to really say, as I said last night, it's a difficult decision, there is no right answer, but it's also an opportunity. And it's an opportunity for us to really sit down with our teachers, leaders in their union as a group and say, you know, this is what we think we should be doing, and how do we make sure that we do it in the best possible way? And I'd like to end by giving you something that literally I received tonight. And it says, "Good evening. My son so-and-so attended the ESY in-person program this summer for the last three weeks. My son will also be attending such and such school in the fall, and he has some disabilities, but his brother as well, but less severe. He will be joining such a program, and so will my daughter and other members of the family. I just don't want to give out the names because I don't think it's appropriate to do so. My point of this email is to simply reach out to you and let you know the program this summer was great, and I felt as a parent it couldn't have gone more smoothly and what I felt was very safe every day. Thankfully, my children are pretty receptive to wearing masks, and I was even told that he wore it every day in school. Today was the last day, and it was a difficult day, and I'm paraphrasing now. Love this teacher's paraphrasing, love going to school." And it ends by talking about him coming home with a gift and a picture of the actual gift that was provided by his teachers. That is Norton, that is the only reason why I'm sharing that story. That's what makes us a special place, that is the very reason why we believe as an administrative team that the best model for us moving forward, Madam Chair and members of the committee, is to consider the hybrid model for the upcoming school year. It is the hardest model in many ways to implement, not the easiest model. If we believe strongly that six feet is what is the best interest of safety, going back to school fully, it compromises all of that, number one. Number two, causes all kinds of issues around transportation and food services that are key components, as you know, of our day-to-day running of our schools. And when we look at the hybrid model and all that goes into it, and again, recognizing that for administrators, for teachers, for parents, for families, for the community at large, for transportation, for food services, for getting kids to kids in the morning, school in the morning or home in the afternoon, it's the most complicated of the three if you are working around that component of the six feet is the minimum standard. But it also allows for a component that I've been speaking about for weeks, if not months. One of the most important things I did as an educator when I was in the classroom was create relationships with my students regardless of their ability level. Our students, as of September 16th, will have been away from teachers for six months. If we feel that the most safest, if you will, opportunity right now for us is to create a sense of social emotional development within our kids, to allow for them to have relationships between each other, because I will tell you, that's what our kids, especially all of the students, are telling me in their communications directly to me, then the hybrid model to us at this point in time, we believe, can be something that we can do, recognizing at all levels that the safety of the students and the staff is priority one every day. And I think, you know, I want to end with this. We are probably one of the only districts, and I should say more than probably, of those that I've spoken to, and as you know, I'm pretty active statewide, we're one of the only districts, if not the only district, that actually has placed some of these decisions within our school nurses, who are highly trained medical people, who know the issues of safety around these types of issues. I met with them today for 45 minutes as a team, and we talked about making sure that the protocols that they're reading meet the minimum standards, but that we can actually exceed the standards if we want to as a community. And that's what we settled on today, that there are areas that we believe we should exceed the minimum standards in order to make sure that we're being as safe as we can possibly be with our student body and with our staff. So I recognize that you folks are under tremendous pressure. You know exactly where I stand as a former school committee member, that this has been placed on school committees, I don't agree that it should be. The decision on athletics is not coming until next week. We are able to publish with the state by next Friday, which is great, because if hopefully you vote tonight, that gives us some time to put a more specific report together. And I think the last part, most important, is whatever you decide tonight, this administration has to be committed and is committed to the fluid fluidity, if you will, of us moving from A to B when needed. And that is going to be the hardest part of what happens after this vote. It's not only setting up for your vote in order of getting the school year started for staff and students via not only impact bargaining, but what class of students is in and what it looks like and what buses are running and all of that. But then the second part, making sure that we're continuing to work at the same time, believe it or not, on the other model, whatever that may be. So if you start remote and you want us to move to hybrid, we have to be in play. If we step in hybrid and we're going to go to remote, because we have to as a local level or as a state level, we have to have that in play. If in fact, we're able to move because you vote that we're in person tonight, but then we're going to go remote, we have to make sure that we are fluid in that exchange. And we have to be prepared for almost all of those options as much as possible before the opening of school, recognizing that the vote you take tonight will be the priority and everything else will continue to work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Byetta, would you mind just updating? You were able to update us, but just sort of our listeners in regards to your noon time conversation with.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. So the noon time conversation today with the Commissioner's Office that I announced last night was in general, an extension of us taking the reports that are due on the 10th, which is Monday, to the 14th, next Friday, which, to be quite honest, for Norton Public Schools is great, because like I said, it gives us more time to take tonight's vote and really, you know, put some more detail into the report, if you will. And the second part was really that the decisions by school committees and then superintendents enacting that they would be supported by the Commissioner's Office, and that his role would be to support us moving forward, understanding that every decision school committees are making and superintendents are making are difficult decisions.
Thank you. Yesterday, when we had talked about your phone call today, we weren't sure what was going to be shared. So nothing that potentially would redirect or sort of shift our attention away from the conversation we've been having about sort of choosing a model. So just want to make sure that everybody is aware that there is no specific change in the expectation that school committees will make that final decision. So I'll speak for myself. I think that at this point of the process, I've educated myself in a lot of different ways. I've had the opportunity, as I shared before, to be on different Zoom meetings with senators, with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. We've had multiple school committee meetings. I've had the opportunity to be part of the back-to-school group. We've had meetings for that. I've reached out to all of you at some capacity to really educate myself. We've had plenty of data, we've had conversations with the Board of Health. I think that, you know, we've all really done our homework, and we're trying to make a decision that we think is best for Norton Public Schools. So at this point, I'm not sure if other committee members have comments, questions, and I do have to say thank you. I know we've had a long week with meetings. The Q and As that we had both on Tuesday and Wednesday, I think were really very helpful. They were very informative. I want to once again thank everybody who sent emails directly to me. I think they absolutely continued to allow me to be open-minded and really understand and maybe just gain a different insight, a different idea. So I think all of those people who reached out to me directly for really sharing their thoughts with me as a school committee member. So I'm not sure if anybody has comments or questions. Kathleen?
I just want to thank everybody who has reached out to us. The support that we've gotten this week with this decision that we have to make has been really overwhelming. I didn't really expect as much as we got. We did read all the emails. In trying to be mindful of people's times, we pretty much let the chair and the superintendent answer any that came through. So if we didn't answer you, you know, it's because we're trying not to inundate you as well, but we do appreciate it. And I agree with you, Carolyn. I don't think I've ever been on more meetings in my life than I have this last month between Senators' School Committee, Massachusetts School Committee. And I'm extremely confident that we have done our definite due diligence, because not only do we have plans in place, but we have backup plans and we have contingency plans and we have, you know, I mean, it's still a moving target. That's what life is right now. But I'm confident that we have all the information that we need to make this vote tonight.
And if I can just share, I became chair not too long ago, a few weeks ago, but prior to that Kathleen was chair, so I was vice chair. And Kathleen and I did spend a lot of time on different Massachusetts Association School Committee meetings. And I have to be honest, and I'm not just saying this because I have to, but it really is amazing how well I think we work as a school committee in comparison to other districts, that we can really have open conversation. We don't all have to agree with each other, but we can respect each other. And in some of our calls that we had, there wasn't that level of, I think, commitment and open discussion that could happen. So I also want to thank my committee members, because I think that we really can, when we have to, we can make a decision, whether we make the same decision or not, that we all really respect where the decision's coming from. So I thank you all for really making this process a little bit more doable, because other school committees weren't as lucky to have such a strong level of administration and support. So thanks.
Well, and the fact that we get along with our administration as well has made this significantly easier.
Yes, that is absolutely true. Anyone else? I don't know if anybody has questions or comment?
Madam Chair, if I may. I also just want to kind of reiterate what's been said with the administration and their willingness to work with us is obviously, as an elected official, you know, we're doing the best we can for those who we represent. We're doing what's best for Norton Public Schools. You know, we hear about what other towns are doing and things like that, but we're really just focusing on what we're doing the best for our town and our kids. Having friends that are educators and hearing some of the stories about how the administration is in other districts and with their unions, and it's horrible things in some other ways. You know, we always say education is changing, and Norton likes to be at the forefront of a lot of things. And this is something that we've, have a great administration that's putting a lot of time and effort into this. It does not go unnoticed by the committee and by the public at large. Personally, this has been a lot of sleepless nights, a lot of tough decisions. You know, so I do believe we're going to ultimately do what's best for the children of Norton when we vote on this in the near future, hopefully. Again, just thank everybody for their time and commitment and doing its best for the most people at this point.
Thanks, Dan. The one thing that I forgot to share, and I don't know how others came to their decision, but for me, as a visual learner, I've sort of taken in so much information. I think I kind of went on overload a little bit. So Dr. Byetta and I were talking, and I had shared with him that I put together my own sort of scribbled sheet of pros and cons for each option had. So, you know, we were charged with three options, a full back-to-school, a hybrid and a remote. And for me, making lists and sort of being able to determine more visually, because I think we've all taken in so much information, and I can, I think we would all be in agreement that certainly we would love the option to go back to school full-time. We know that there's a lot of community members that would love that option. We know that we also have to follow specific guidelines set forth by the state. And the guidelines were quite stringent in regards to some of the things that we would need to do. And I think very quickly we had to maybe move that off of our option list, because it was somewhat impossible for a district to complete all of that. So it was for me, making a choice between hybrid and remote, and that's where sort of my list really was important. So I don't know how everybody else made their decisions, but I think we could all agree that there are certainly pros and cons to each model. There's no question. I think we just have to really decide based on the facts that we have, based on what our administration has put forth in regards to options for both remote and hybrid. We just have to make our decision and move forward with that. So I think if there's any other comment, we certainly can hear those now. And if not, I think that we could move to a vote.
Madam Chair, I believe you have Ms. Cohen trying to get.
Oh, sorry, Sheri, I'm sorry. Sheri, you're gonna, you're gonna talk?
I'm gonna try. As soon as my friends that are all these panelists here see me unmute, they start giving me a hard time that I probably will cry. I don't know why I'm like this, but I am, so it is what it is. I first just want to start off by saying I am so completely overwhelmed after what I said last night, just a simple phrase of how many people have reached out. I mean, it really is incredible. See, people are texting me now about my tears. Okay, I'm trying to pull it together.
Don't read the texts.
I know, it will come up on my computer. I am completely overwhelmed by, you know, people have no idea where I'm thinking or where I'm at, and they still continue to say that we are here, we back you, no matter what. So that's the first thing. So thank you to everybody who has reached out. Thank you to everybody who has submitted the questions. You make us better at what we do by challenging us. To the people on this panel, man, I wouldn't want to go through anything like this with anybody else. Each and every one of you have played such an important part and an important role in getting us to where we are. There is one thing for sure, and that is that Norton leads. We do not follow, we lead. And I think not only academically, but in the way that we behave, the way that we treat each other, the way that we respect each other, even though we might disagree, we will always respect each other. And some real friendships have really come out of this. I think, you know, thirdly, as far as Norton is concerned, you know, I've witnessed this Town of Norton rally many, many times. And I think that this is one of those times that even if you don't agree with what we decide tonight, that we can still all rally together and we can move forward and do the best that we can possibly do with keeping our students and our staff safe. I've seen it, and I think that being positive and having each other's backs, there's something to be said for that. And I think that Norton is one of these towns, it's just a special community, and it can be done, but it needs to be done with everybody's help. So that, I just wanted to say that. And I also just wanted to say, you know, I have put a lot of time and effort in. I had a long conversation with our Board of Health agent yesterday, you know, looking at the facts of the Town of Norton and where our numbers are truly at in our community. I also sent another spreadsheet to the committee earlier today about some of the other surrounding communities and where their positive COVID numbers are at. And it's nice to see a downward move in our local community and surrounding communities. So I just, I need people to know that, you know, this wasn't, the decision that I have come to isn't, wasn't done lightly, it was based on a lot of facts. And I just hope at the end of the day, just again, that we are all kind to each other and can move forward together. I didn't cry.
Thanks, Sheri. I think we definitely can all agree, this decision that we make tonight, each one of us in our own way really did our homework, really were researchers, and just based it all on fact and talked to the right people and made the right connections. So thanks, Sheri. And as I see you're unmuted, does that mean you would like to?
Everybody else is, I might as well as well. I'm a little bit surprised by everybody and the discussion of research, because I flipped a coin, I'll be honest with you. No, I'm kidding, obviously. Listen, the reality is, school committees across the state were put in a really poor position. And I get the why of it, but that's the reality. You know, we're not going to make a good decision tonight, and we're not going to make the right decision, because quite honestly, that's not what this is about. I've had conversations with some of the other committee members over the past week or so, and privately told them, you know, we're really choosing the least bad option. That's the reality, because kids going to school, interacting with their peers, interacting with their teachers, playing sports, going to drama, going to band, you know, hanging out with their friends afterwards, that's not really the gold standard, that should be the only standard. And anything less than that is honestly unacceptable. But guess what? We got dealt a bad hand, the world got dealt a bad hand, and here we are in a pandemic. So to kind of reiterate something that Carolyn talked about earlier, you know, getting the kids back to school, and I think, I think the committee members and Dr. Byetta know it, no one, no one was more in that corner than me, and for a long time. I really wanted the kids to get back into school. And the reality is, is you go through this, and the safety of the kids, I'm gonna say something, don't anybody lose your mind, but the safety of the kids was never my concern. Not that I was cavalier about it, but honestly, I couldn't even get to that point. I couldn't get to the point where it was like, okay, now what about the safety of the kids? Because the reality is, we just logistically and financially couldn't go with that option. There was just no way. And again, no one wants that more than I do, but it's not doable. And if an option's not doable, you kind of have to take it off the table. And the reality is, again, to what Carolyn said, we were given mandates, we were given regulations. And I know it's, you know, it's easy to sit at home and say, well, you should send the kids back to school, but you have to take all these factors into account, and it changes things, skews the dynamic of it. And all of a sudden, an option you think is the most palatable and best option, again, becomes basically undoable, right? I mean, it's kind of where we're at. So, and, you know, listen, here's the reality, too. Like, we're gonna make a decision tonight, and, you know, Mike Tyson once said, "Everybody has a plan to get punched in the mouth. We're gonna get punched in the mouth. Things are absolutely gonna go sideways. Life is nothing but a series of things going sideways, that's what it is. I guarantee you, things will go sideways. They may go sideways poorly, they may go sideways for the better. But we are actually, absolutely gonna have to pivot at some point, whether we are remote pivot to hybrid, hybrid pivot to remote, hybrid pivot to full-time. It's gonna happen, it's gonna happen quickly, and it's, and I know there are people who think, no, no, we're definitely gonna go remote eventually. Nah, probably, that's probably where we're gonna have to end up, but I don't think it's a 100% chance. I think there's also a chance we go the other way. We gotta be ready, you know, that's just the reality. So we have three great plans in place, they're not where we want to be, they're not the standard, they're not the gold standard, but the plans we have to live under right now. And quite frankly, we've been tossing back and forth what other towns are doing, and how they're doing, et cetera. And I don't think anybody's come up with a better reason for what they're doing or a better rationale for what they're doing than we have. The other towns, honestly, I'm not overly impressed by, quite honestly. And this isn't just to talk my own book up, but that's just the reality. I, the other, other towns, honestly, I, I'm not overly impressed by, quite honestly. And this isn't just to talk my own, my own book up, but, but that's just the reality. So, you know, I, I know where I'm at. I don't know how we want to proceed with this, but I, I can, I can stay on that piece with, with what I'm deciding because A, I know that we put a lot of thought into it, but also I know that whatever we decide, you gotta be prepared for it to change. It's, it's, it's gonna happen. And Joe and I had a conversation, Joe and I had many conversations where I, I wanted him to kind of talk me through things because sometimes it helps to say, okay, and, and Joe and I have a long relationship. And, you know, we have a, a good enough relationship that, you know, I can, I can say to him, Joe, hey, I don't agree with you on this. And he can say to me, hey, you're wrong about that. And, and it doesn't affect our relationship. We respect each other and we can, we can go with that. So, so I've had a lot of, you know, a lot of talks with him about how this is gonna go. And he and I both agree, like, the reality is, we need to be ready to move at a moment's notice. And we may say tonight, this is the plan for four weeks or six weeks or whatever we're committed to do. That's until we get punched in the face, until we get punched in the face. You know, that's, that's the reality. So, we're gonna make a decision tonight, tomorrow morning, there'll be a ton of people who think we're geniuses, you know, a ton of people think I'm an idiot. Nah, you know what? My, my wife thinks I'm an idiot all the time. It's, it is what it is, right? So, I mean, it's, you, you gotta make the best decision you can make, given the, given the information you have at hand. And I, I think I for one certainly am prepared to do that. So I'll, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thanks, Dinesh. Dr. Byetta, did you have a comment?
I'm not sure if Dinesh is into David Lee Roth, Sammy Haga or Gary Sharone, since he's got his Van Halen t-shirt on. But I'm, I'm gonna guess it's David Lee Roth.
There is no Van Halen after David Lee Roth.
No, I think my, my, my general comment is, is for the school committee to make its own motion if it so chooses, except there's superintendent's recommendation. You know, I, I've said since the beginning, it's been a lot of work, it's been a lot of work working together. And I love the way Dinesh just said it because there's no decision that we're gonna get pats on the back, we're gonna get slapped around. And the fact of the matter is, we're gonna, we're gonna take this difficult decision and make it into an opportunity and try to do the very best, if not maybe try to be a model for the rest of the state.
I think what was interesting for me after our two nights of question and answer, I initially went into those meetings with the thought process that we were doing all of this work. We had sat on committees and we had been to multiple Zooms. And we've had multiple meetings and conversations and have been shared multiple documents to review and to read and to comment on. And that we were going to get some form of a phone call or some mandate from the state that basically said all of that work was for nothing because we're going to tell you how you're going to do it. And I think after the two nights of question and answer, what I realized is that even if that happens, all of the work that we did isn't for nothing. All of the time we spent, all of the thought we put into these plans, because at some point, even if the state was to mandate our next steps or, or how we move forward, we absolutely, or I feel that Norton absolutely is in a position to pivot in a moment. So however we choose to vote tonight, or, or whatever our vote is for tonight, it doesn't make me feel as anxious that if the state was to come in and shift that mandate, that our work was, was not valuable. Because I think that it just means that we're ready when something does come, as Dinesh said, you know, if something happens and we have to pivot really quickly, I think Norton will be ready to do that. So, I think a lot of people worked really hard. Again, I just want to thank everybody, our administrators, our teachers, our staff, everybody who was part of the conversation. It's been very helpful. Our community members, of course, for really being active participants in our, in both our town halls, in these most recent meetings, and then also communicating with us via email. It's been really helpful. So I feel very ready to vote. I think that the way that I understand it is that I can make a motion based on the recommendation of, oh, sorry, Dinesh, you're gonna?
I, I just have a quick question. And Joe, this is probably, you'll probably chime in on this. Are, are we gonna, are we gonna put a timeline on this for, for a official review? Or are we going to just have it an open and review? You're muted.
That's really up to, to the committee. If the committee chooses, for example, the committee could say that you're going to vote for X and you'd like to see a formal report from the administration on how things are going. What are the issues? What are the concerns? And put a timeline on that. You can do that. You can say that you want us to provide you, you know, a formal local forum on what's going on as a next step to a four or six weeks in. It's really up to you.
So would, would any of the committee members object to me making a motion with the timeline of four months for us to formally revote it? And, and say, yes, we want to continue with it, or no, we want to try something different?
Is that four months or four weeks?
Four weeks. I'm, I'm sorry, four weeks.
I am not opposed to that.
I think, I, I don't know that I'm opposed, but I think I want to have the option that, you know, we can continue to get numbers from the Board of Health. I think that's important to, to keep looking at where our numbers are at. So I don't know if that's something that we can do maybe weekly to get numbers.
I, I can receive them on a weekly basis from, from Christian.
Yeah, right, Sheri. This, this would be more of a, a, a drop dead date, if you will. So, so after four weeks, we are officially going to meet and, and either re-up under the, the plan that we've chosen or not. That's not to say that we can't, if, if, if all of a sudden tomorrow, Moderna comes out with a vaccine and guess what? Everything's fine. We can always kind of reevaluate on the fly. It's not to stop that, but it's to say that at the very least, four weeks in, in, from the start of school, not from the vote, obviously, from the start of school, we will officially review it and, and decide to maintain or not maintain that path.
Understood. Then yes, that makes sense as long as we can, you know, reevaluate. But I think, Joe, going forward, if we can get numbers from Chris, our health agent on a weekly basis, I think even, even at this point in August, I think it's important to, to continue watching that as we get closer.
That's not a problem.
So, does the motion get created as a motion on the recommendation for the hybrid model as developed by Norton Public Schools? With a expectation of a evaluation within four weeks or in four weeks? How, how does? Does that get?
I would suggest that, that we utilize four weeks of data to make a decision because you gotta remember the kids are only going through two cycles, if you will, of seeing their actual teachers at that point on the hybrid model, if that's the model that you're going with. But again, I, it doesn't, and from my perspective, the timeline is somewhat irrelevant because I would be utilizing not only health numbers and all of that, but literally what are the strengths and weaknesses so far that we have seen of the program? Or what's the data that says we should be moving in another direction?
Yeah. I don't, I don't know if everybody, other than Carolyn, I don't know if everybody's, I don't think anybody's actually stated an actual preference. I, I think I know. I, I can guess, I think, what everybody is gonna vote, but, but we haven't.
I was using that, Dinesh, just as we needed a motion to either approve or, and that was the recommendation.
Right. So I, I think we should do that then. So why don't?
That was the reason why I was using that was because it was the recommendation and then people can choose to support or decline.
I was getting into it that that might be what you wanted too. All right. So I'm, I'm gonna make a motion and I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation to go to the hybrid model with a formal review and vote after four weeks of data. Is that what we want, Joe?
That would be perfect. So that would put us, so just to, so for the sake of discussion and timeline, the first week is, right now would probably be a three day week. I would like to say that that's not really a week of us looking at data because we're gonna have to create a model for that week. In other words, we might have the kids come in for a remote on Wednesday and then physically Thursday, Friday on that Tuesday, Thursday model. So if we were to say that that was a, for lack of a better word, a non-week of the four weeks, then the first full week.
So let's, let's just do six weeks then because we're getting into a gray area of data.
I, I would accept that even better.
I, I rescind my motion. I will now re-motion, I motion, make a motion that we accept the recommendation for a hybrid model with a formal review and vote to continue or not continue after six weeks of school.
To continue or not continue. Just taking notes. Is there a second?
Second.
So we can vote.
So we have Savas with the motion. Was that Cohen or, or she? I can't.
You, Sheri.
Okay.
So there was a second. So we will do a roll call. So, Dinesh, I'll start with myself. Carolyn, yes. Sheri?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So the first question I already just got on the Q and A is that this is related to the students in school. So you have a second agenda item that we want to at least vote on for the state of teachers back to school in the 10 days and students first day. We can work on the rest of the calendar later, but I think it's really important for families and our staff to know. So on that item of the calendar, the recommendation is that teachers come to school beginning the 31st of August, the first, second and third of August, meaning Friday, no, no, is not a school day for them. Yeah, of September. They then come in the eighth through the 11th, the 14th and the 15th, which would give them the 10 professional development days as per the agreement between the Mass Teachers Association and the Commissioner's Office to the 170 days of school instead of 180 for students. And school would start on the 16th, which is a Wednesday, with a schedule for that week of Wednesday, Thursday, Friday to be determined versus the following week beginning the hybrid model as, as tentatively printed. And that the two remaining contractual days be floating days until determined by the administration and support of the NTA and the school committee.
What was the original start of school? Does this fit into our original?
Right. So the original start of school for teachers was the first and the second of September and students on the eighth of September. So this moves the teachers back one day to the 31st and includes the third and moves the students to Wednesday, the 16th. The purposes of those 10 days are everything to do with school safety under the new protocols and the potential agreement with the NTA. All issues to, related to training around technology and curriculum, all issues to do with the little, the, 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 the deep stuff of taking attendance, grading and all of that stuff. It's really about taking a look at each of the schools. We'll have protocols that are what I would call 30,000 feet, our general protocols, and then all the protocols that need to go into effect. For example, a, a school with a second floor has different protocols than the LGN, which is a one-floor building. A school that has bathrooms in every hallway has, is different than the school that has, doesn't have them in every hallway, those types of issues. And as well as response to potential cases.
So are you asking for a vote on this new calendar in regards to these 10 days? Or are you just sharing this information?
I like a vote for us to set the standard that the teacher start of the school year is the 31st and the start, and the student's school year is the 16th.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the start of the school year for teachers for August 31st? With the start of the school year for students as September 16th?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. So all in favor? Sheri?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Carolyn, yes.
This vote is 5-0?
Yes.
That's all I have for you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Well, the work now begins.
We do know that at this point, this is when the, the really tough work happens.
Yeah.
Really quickly, we have a, we have a question, actually we have two questions now in the, in the Q and A. Does this also include the two weeks staff are in school for the 10 days of PD? I, I think that is in reference to when the six week period will start. And the intention, I think, is to start it once the kids are in school and we see.
Correct. Yes. I took the vote as when the students are returning to school starting on the 16th. So that takes us to the end of October, which is a good collection of data. Not when the teachers are, of course, we will continue not only share the, the data on a weekly basis with, with the school committee, but we'll do the same thing with our staff and our families. And that's not a problem at all for us to communicate.
There are two other questions there.
The, does this change the first period, pay period for teachers? We'll have to take a look at that, but I, I do not believe that that would be changed from the original publication that we sent forward to you because it only establishes a one day further back. Matt, I'll defer to you, but I don't believe that changes anything for them.
No, it does not. The, the first pay will still be the first pay in September on the 10th.
And someone joining late, the vote was a hybrid vote and now the specifics of that A, B schedule and all of that. Really, the, the big issue will be that first week because it is a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We'll have some internal discussions about the best way. I would love to have our teachers and our kids together for at least one of those days physically because I, I think that would be fantastic. Maybe the first day, the Wednesday is the Monday, so it's a remote day. Maybe the next day it's an A day and the, and the Friday is a B day. That way we have some uniformity between our families. And I know that the teachers are also very interested in, in finding ways to try to reach out to students before even that first day. So we'll, we'll put some plans in, in place together for that. Of course, we'll keep you in the loop. The only other business is informational. The MIAA did release this afternoon that there is no connection between the choice of model and athletics. Those are two separate decisions. Number one, number two, would speak to some controversy we heard from some other votes that took place in the region. And number two, currently the chapter 70 situation and the vote to take a budget for the, the three months from the state pretty much holds us at what we anticipated. So that's a, that's a positive thing for us. We're hearing that that actually may be carried out for the fiscal year. That's concerning around two issues. One is CIRCA breaker could take a cut, which is our special education CIRCA breaker account. And the only other account that for us internally right now, will need action for you in the next few weeks, once we have some numbers and information, is going to be the issue of transportation and Little Lancers preschool tuition. That, that will create a potential negative in both of those. That will require us to potentially look at one-time expenses through the CARES Act or having to go back to the town to balance our budget.
That's one of the questions too about Little Lancers?
Yeah. So Little Lancers right now, depending on, right now, the idea with Little Lancers, as you know, in the hybrid model is that they would go remote on Monday, but physically to school all four days. Same thing with our specialized programs. And so then that, what does that mean for paying tuition situations? Are we still going with the full model of paying? Or are we gonna have some type of a break because it is different? We, we need to see what that means. We'll have a recommendation for you.
I think I just want to make sure we invite any families, any parents who have questions, just want to think about options. Certainly, we've, we've invited everybody to email whoever you felt comfortable with regarding your questions. Dr. Byetta is always available, is perhaps the, the simplest to, to contact. So if you go to Let's Talk, you can reach him through Let's Talk. But certainly, our emails are always available and we will certainly, as I said last night, if you email one of us as a school committee member, if we don't have the answer, we will certainly find it for you.
So let me, let me end this for you tonight because I think the next thing is gonna be, oh my goodness, what does this mean to me now that the vote's taking place? So a couple of different things. Tomorrow, we will release a request for each family to respond to a specific survey around a hybrid model and do they want to go remote instead, full remote. And so there's the choice within the choice, if you will, and transportation. So those are very specific and those have a turnaround time of about a week in terms for us to create some of the other questions we're getting now around cohorts, siblings and all of that. The second part is our staff will receive tomorrow an email from Elizabeth Simone in the HR office, which provides the regulations under all of the options available. which provides the regulations under all of the options available under medical situations, family medical, and childcare for employees. Um, and it has actually a, a very clear, you know, follow along X, Y, Z. And then the other part, so they, they'll have a turnaround time, um, as well, that we've requested. And then the last part, um, is that we're going to attempt to provide parental information back to students. Um, our staff, administrators will be working on those cohort models, the transportation model out of Matt Wells' office, um, become the two key things, and then delivery of services around who chooses which model within the model, and how does that impact class sizes? And then create the potential for staff to support remote learning on remote hybrid days. Um, so, um, a lot to be done in the next, um, few weeks, and before the students report. I would anticipate that with the start date of 16th, that we try to get, um, those types of A, B days out to, to, out to families as soon as we can, which is more important than which teacher do I have? Um, you know, in other words, saying, okay, we have the numbers, you're gonna be in A cohort Tuesday, Thursday, you're gonna be the cohort Wednesday, Friday. That's more important on day one for parents to fix their schedule, and how they need to support their families. More important than, do I have Mr. Bieta or Mrs. Wentz for as my grade-three teacher? She would, by the way, be significantly better at that than me, for the record.
Joe, I just want to mention as well that, um, going home with the survey would also be, um, a shorter version of our PowerPoint that we presented, um, earlier this week, that outlines, um, more specific details about the hybrid model, and, um, some sample schedules. And again, those are just sample schedules, but for people that perhaps weren't able to make it to the meeting on Tuesday night, um, just to give them a general understanding of what that looks like.
Yeah, and, and I would say probably a week from tonight, no later than tomorrow, you'll all, as families, receive my filed report on behalf of the district, and all of my colleagues that have been working on this, on a letter to the community, an executive summary, the selection of the model, and then all of the other models are in there, too, um, providing, um, more, also things like the training, uh, schedules around PD and safety, um, providing supports for students. For example, we, we are putting some money in our CARES Act for tutoring students who are gonna need support, that, that does, that's beyond, and includes students on the 504, ELL, or IEP, general education students will be involved with that, and those types of things that we want to help families. Oh, and, um, so that you know, we, we have our Champions colleagues, um, we're gonna be talking to them specifically, um, about supporting staff and families, um, with remote days. Um, but we also have some other options available to us, available to us off-site that came in today that I'll be sharing, uh, with you as well. Uh, Champions is our number-one partner, but the only negative with Champions is literally, the only negative is they're physically in our buildings, or physically using our building. So we're, we're gonna try to take a look and see if we have any partners in the area, um, third parties, but also partners in the area that would be willing to work with us in Champions, and potentially opening other sites in town that could actually support, um, staff and families. Um, there is a cost, but of course, um, we would be doing everything we can to support, um, those costs in order to, um, um, make sure that families are being supported. Um, everybody stay healthy and safe, uh, that's the most important part. You need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. I just want to, um, before we do that, sorry, I just want, maybe Jen, if you could just look at those two questions, um, that would be great.
Yep, I'm responding to them.
I appreciate that, thank you, just making sure that they didn't go unnoticed. So, can we adjourn the meeting, Jen, if you're still responding?
Vinnie, do you have the other one?
Yeah, I'm working on it right now.
Thank you.
I'll wait until you do the?
Do not, do not, um, even if we end our meeting, do not close it until those answers, excuse me, those questions are answered, so thank you for doing that.
One of the things, Carolyn, too, that, um, just since everybody's still on, and I know people are getting off, but since there are some so specific questions to some families.
Do what?
Please reach out, um, to Vinnie Cersei, our Director of PPS, it's V Cersei, and then at Norton, just like everybody else. Or Casey Russo, which is C Russo, uh, she's our Coordinator of Special Ed now. Um, it's, it's the, the amount of work coming out of their office in the last few weeks has been tremendous. They're both new to many of you in the special education area, but they're both, uh, come with significant backgrounds in dealing with, um, clinical psychology and programming, as well as direct service providing and all of that, so please take advantage of them. Sorry, you guys, I know you're busy, but this is the time. And I plan on maybe having a couple of open forums, probably in another week, week and a half, for parents around just what does this mean to me? Um, and then, uh, setting up, uh, special ed, maybe a special ed area, maybe even an ELL area, and a 504, and how to provide services to students, and all that stuff. So we'll be back with you, don't think we're just gonna go silent until the 16th. We promise to be back with parent meetings and all of that in the near future.
And I think we just want to reiterate that this is really going to be the time when a lot of work is taking place. So, as everybody knows, families have an option to, um, choose a full remote schedule, even though we did not vote that, that families can make that choice. So, once we have more data that is, um, received after the, um, surveys that go out, I think that's when it would probably be appropriate, right, Dr. Bieta, for you to maybe do a, a forum where we could have more information. Families would, you know, they're asking questions about numbers and cohorts, and, and neighborhoods, and those kinds of things. It's probably those kinds of questions we just cannot answer right now, because there's so many moving pieces.
We probably will begin, I would say, no later than the week of the 24th. I can see myself scheduling probably two different meetings for parents that week, uh, maybe one during the day, um, to give some families flexibility, and then one during the evening. Um, and we'll probably continue that type of a model, uh, I would say, throughout and until school starts.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, a motion to adjourn the school committee meeting.
We already, we already have a motion in a second.
Savas and Cohen.
Okay, so all in favor, sorry. Um, Sherri?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Carolyn is yes, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
Well done, everybody, well done.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody, have a good night.
You too, thanks, Daniel.
Good night.